Councilman Mayor, would you lead us in a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a moment of silence. Mr. Christopher Buzet, he worked for New Milford, volunteered for New Milford Ambulance, Northville Fire Department, worked at New Milford Hospital, and also volunteered and worked for the New Milford Police Department Dispatch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Good man. Is he good, man, next or a minute? Okay, we've got Cooper's Lane, Charlie.
Charlie.
Jones.
Jones.
Calm down.
Good evening. Charlie Jones, Tangleburgers Lane, New Milford, Connecticut. I was honored to serve as vice chair on the Landfill Settlement Committee, which many call the Waste Management Fund, with the great George Doring, without whom this fund would not exist, at least not in the form it is today. There are others who received credit for obtaining this settlement, however, without George, the fund never would have happened. We served from late 2000 until January 2002. We had many public meetings, and input was enormous. The overwhelming majority of the public clearly thought that the money should not be used for regular tax abatement and maintenance, but a separate fund to utilize this boon to achieve things that cannot be achieved under normal circumstances. I last appeared before the town council when we felt that the prior administration was using the account as a catch-all slush fund. I'm here today because I hope that's not heading down the same road again. We submitted the following recommendations to the town council on January 14, 2002, and the council approved our recommendations with a few minor changes on February 8, 2002. The ordinance that was adopted by the town allowed for the purpose and use of the fund: the acquisition of land and buildings thereon for municipal public recreation purposes, public education purposes, or public library facilities; construction of municipal public recreation, education, and library facilities; the acquisition of land and buildings thereon for open space; the purchase or acquisition of development rights of farm or agricultural land; and the monies in the fund are to be applied as follows. And the follows is the, we're in the category right now, 2006 through the end, the town is entitled to 10% of the balance of the fund for normal maintenance and budget requirements. If my numbers are right, the fund is about $13 million right now. We do $2 million this year. If you take the $1,300,000 that you're allowed, the 10%, that leaves $700,000 that we would receive, and if somehow, in some stretch of imagination, $400,000 is taken out the sidewalks in front of Pizza Parlor's gas stations and other buildings, it'll leave the fund $300,000 this year, instead of what people think is going to be $2 million. We had a concern in time that the public's wishes could be circumvented, but we assume that the town council and the Board of Finance, in their wisdom, will follow the public's wishes. Repairs and renovations, security systems, roof sidewalks, and repairs to buildings and property already owned by the town does not fall into any of the categories approved by ordinance, but should be done through the amount of fund already permitted, in this case, the $1,300,000, and through other regular town budgeting processes. Good projects which would have not been possible have been completed as a result of wise use of the fund. Misuse of the fund could make future exciting projects impossible. We know that the council has the final word in all expenditures, but we urge the council to review the ordinance and assure that the public's wishes be fulfilled. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Julie Bailey, please.
I live at 144 Buck Rock Road, and I'm at present a volunteer on the Riverfront Revitalization Committee, on the Bar Grant Committee, and for the last seven years, a volunteer on the New Milford River Trail Association, which is actually the grassroots community counterpart to the Bike and Trail Committee of the town. And we raise funds for such projects as new bikes, for the safety program of bike riding for kids at the high school, et cetera. And I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen, not representing any of those. We've come quite a long way, when you stop to think about it, in what we've done to get our trail going, our river trail. We now have five and a quarter miles, and we have just about eight more to go to finish it. And that's going to be a long time to create this multipurpose trail. It's going to be a lot of grant writing, a lot of seeking corporate and foundation and private grants to complete the remaining miles. And I want you to know that Brookfield has already begun discussions among themselves as to how to get their trail to the border with New Milford, so that in the future, when our envisioned trail gets down there, the two trails will come together as part of that famous New England Greenway, that we expect to bring in lots of tourism and lots of dollars to our various towns. But because so many Connecticut trails in towns like Nogatuck, Simsbury, Collinsville, et cetera, started long before we did, and this is a theme that you're probably tired of hearing at this point, they were able to do that with the kind of generous state federal funding that was available 10 and 20 years ago. This no longer is so easy to access, as we all know. So we have to be savvier, and we have to be smarter, and we have to figure out to do a lot more on our own, with the kind of volunteer resources and money that we can access from other places. So when an opportunity comes along to piggyback on another infrastructure project, that we can do something to accelerate building our trail in a more cost-effective way, we should at least explore it. Case in point: the paving of the Pickett District Road. The section, actually it's Section 8 in Melona McBroom's study, that calls for a 10-foot-wide path of asphalt along the grass verge on the other side of KC. To be able to do that, and to still have a green verge, it's a buffer between the road and that future trail, you're going to have to move the curb slightly to the west on that. Now, what I am hoping the town will consider, and the road committee, and the Bike and Trail Committee, is urging Public Works to, when they put it out to bid, or when they go through the design phase, actually, which they're in at this present point right now, that they consider what it would cost to move that curb slightly, so that when we get around to being able to afford that section, which could be sooner than anyone thinks, or later, we're not sure, you don't have to tear down the new curb and put a new one in. That's the kind of thing I think we really ought to consider. Now, obviously, the Bike and Trail Committee is coming up with a survey, and it looks like an excellent one, that they're going to make available to everybody in New Milford to fill out and say, which sections do you think we ought to give priority to? But what often happens to this messy business of building a trail that we've seen from other towns, is you either get an easement that you never expected to get, or you get a grant for another part of the trail that you had not expected, and so you have to kind of reconcile that with what the priorities of the residents are. So I am hoping that you all will consider asking Public Works to include that as well. Since the design work for that paving is still being done, they would be able to see what kinds of economies of scale are possible if they consider putting that in, and then it would be the responsibility of the town to figure out if that could be included in the bonding for the new road. I want to thank you for that. I want to thank all of you for all of the support you've given for this trail coming on, and want to assure you that at some point, that trail is going to get built. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Chris Cosgrove, please.
Chris Cosgrove, 143 Sunny Valley Road. Just wanted to discuss, I was at a recent Board of Finance meeting where we received the audit for the last fiscal year for the town. It was a lot of good discussion, but the thing that resonated with me most was a comment from the auditors, where they said it was the cleanest audit they had ever seen with the town. And based on that, I wanted to just voice my appreciation for Director of Finance, Asapow, Comptroller, and I had to write the name down because I'm going to butcher her last name, but Alzarchik, and Mayor Bass, through your leadership, that we're adhering to processes, and things are transparent, and we're accounting properly for taxpayer money, and the leadership is being accountable to the taxpayers. So, thanks very much.
Thank you, Chris. Adrian Aricchio, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. Adrian Aricchio, 72 Choniski Road. I have some questions tonight for all of you. And number one, I want to start with you, Mayor Bass, because I read your comments in the News Times of February 20th about the high cost of natural gas at the Pettibone Community Center. So the first one is, I think it's good that tonight's agenda is going to address the boiler repair at Pettibone, because it is needed. There's people smelling gas in there, I've been in the building, I've smelled it. And if it's costing so much for gas, it's probably because it's leaking, and we're wasting a lot of money. Number two, it's bad that you're going to try and take that money from the Pettibone Roof Repair Budget, which is in your $1.5 million list of things that you all spent in September. Number three, if gas is leaking from a boiler in need of maintenance, is deferred maintenance putting people's lives in jeopardy? Last Thursday night, I was in that building, taking a class with Parks and Rec. There were probably 200 people in the building. Not kidding. Boy Scouts were filled, they filled the cafeteria, there were parents, there were scout leaders, Parks and Rec, and CERT was having their training. It was so busy in that building, you couldn't even park, except all the way out to Pickett District Road. Number four, you've been in office since November 2017, shouldn't this have been addressed before the heating season began? You've had plenty of time, all of you have had plenty of time, to think about fixing the boiler. Number five, I sincerely hope that members of the council won't start the Pettibone Boiler Discussion tonight with the all-too-familiar comments, "We have no money," because I hear this, I hear this from you, Mr. Nahomay, from you, Mr. Skelly, I hear from you, Ms. Francis, you, Mr. Bass, you, Mr. Esposito, you, Mr. Gold, I don't see Mr. Samansky here, but he's always saying it. Because you have the money, it's been put aside, just do it. Number six, if you remember, there was no money for the $18,000 Community Center Survey, which the town council had initially requested last year, but when the vote to authorize that money came out, most of you voted no. Why? The answer was, "We have no money." Number seven, at the September 12 Board of Finance Meeting this past September, Mayor Bass, you brought forward a list of items to be purchased using, quote, "one and a half million dollars." One and a half million dollars that was not used to allay the budget deficit created by the lack of state funding. That's in the minutes on the Board of Finance, I'm not making that up. I don't know where the one and a half million dollars came from, but you spent it, basically, in 12 minutes. Big list of stuff. On that list, number eight, on that list was a $335,000, I'll say it again, $335,000 pothole filling machine, or the so-called Pothole Killer, because I looked them up, I was so curious, what is this thing? But according to the council, we have no money. We have no money, this is what you say every time. Number nine, I was so curious about this miracle pothole filling machine, I looked it up to see where else it's being used around the country, and whether it's worth $335,000 of our taxpayer money. Wherever that one and a half million dollars came from, this is part of those expenses. Number 10, the devil is always in the details, isn't it? So here's the details: these patching machines cost a fortune to keep them on the road, according to the Road Commission of Oakland County, Michigan, that's where Detroit is. And I called them, I called their Public Works Department to ask them. And they said they prefer cold patch, where crews shovel asphalt and gravel into the holes, that's their preferred method, in Oakland County, Michigan, near Detroit, where they have colder days than we do. You can be skeptical, but you can call them yourself if you don't believe them. Number 11, the pothole patch from the Pothole Killer is nearly permanent. That sounds like a good thing, doesn't it? But the road around the patch will fail before the patch itself, and they'd even have more potholes. So where does that leave us? Devil's in the details, like I said. Number 12, is this the machine that Public Works was authorized to purchase? Did it go out for bids? Or did we just buy it for $335,000? Were there any bids? I didn't hear anything about it. I'm just really shocked by that.
Adrian, you're at four minutes.
Okay, I'll finish, I have seven items left. Number 13, how much is the $335,000 pothole filling machine going to cost taxpayers in maintenance? Because this town has a history of letting maintenance go by the wayside. Number 14, the Public Works Department is the beneficiary of much of that $1.5 million list of items that was presented to the Board of Finance in September. Perhaps Public Works budgets should be scrutinized more closely. You can laugh, Mr. Esposito, but these are all real things. You saw the list. I really want to laugh about it. That's our taxpayer money. Number 15, a more serious road problem in town is the increasing number of large tractor-trailers using our local roads to shortcut from Route 7 to Route 202. I stopped one the other day on Sawyer Hill. He let me go past him, and I opened my window, and he rolled down his window, and I said, you know, "This isn't a truck route." And he said, "I know," in his Massachusetts accent, "I'm using my Garmin to go shortcutting." So what has Public Works done to address the truck traffic on the back roads? We asked them at the Horizontal Roads Sign Meeting in Town Hall a few weeks ago, we said, "Why don't you post truck route signs on Route 7 and Route 202?" Have they done that? 17, there are other expensive items on the list.
Adrian, we appreciate your comment.
Okay.
You'll hold over another question.
One more, one more. I had to repair my own boiler recently for $1,000, so it would last another 10 years. I expect that you guys will repair that boiler, so it lasts us longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Adrian. Adrian Watson, please.
Good evening. Kind of a crazy night to be out with all this wind. Mary Jane Lundgren, 89, Choniski Road. Not long ago, I know everybody remembers, the Thompsons and the restaurant, and how they got up, they got there one morning, and there were racial slurs all over their windows. It was a horrible thing. The good thing was, the community came together, everybody came together, and hate has no home, was our message. It was a real outpouring of support for the Thompsons. So I have to say, I'm shocked and disappointed, I saw this on Facebook, and then I saw it was actually in the newspaper, the News Times, on Friday, about Scott Pressler coming to New Milford to do a so-called voter training. And if people had done their homework, which I have a feeling maybe they hadn't, but Scott Pressler is very well-known as an anti-Muslim person, he's been very big organizing against Muslims, he was part of the Charlottesville riot that we all know had such a disastrous outcome. And now he's coming to New Milford under this guise, supposedly being sponsored by the 30th Senate District Republicans. So my hope is that, as the Mayor Pete, and as the Town Council, that you will seriously, if he is coming here, or if he's looking for a bigger venue, which I've also seen that too, that you will push back and tell him, basically, that he's not welcome in the town of New Milford. It's not going to be a good thing for anybody in this town. We have a small Muslim community, they're part of our town, they're even on some of our boards, and I think it's a really bad message to go out to the community. And I have to say, I was really surprised, when I looked on Facebook, I saw Mr. Esposito liking it, and I saw Mr. Samansky liking it, and maybe I can just write it off as, "You didn't do your homework, and you didn't realize what a bad dude this guy is." So I'm really hoping that you will push back if he decides to come into New Milford. We don't want his hate message in town, and we don't want our Muslim community to be offended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Lucia Weller, please.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Wildrick, I live at 6 South Main Street. And I didn't realize Julie was going to be speaking about this, so I'm going to let her comments stand, but I'm going to, but I'm going to add a few things about the River Trail and Pickett District Road, but also the River Trail and West Street. All of that, I happen to be both a walker and a biker, and one of the things I first got involved with, and my husband as well, when we first came to town five years ago, was the River Trail Association, because I know river trails in downtowns can be tremendous economic development generators. So I was excited to get involved with it. And we've made great progress, and there's really cool stuff going on, a lot more to go. You know, there are a couple of things that are really pretty easy to accomplish in the big picture for the River Trail. One of them is the Pickett District Road segment, and that's a mile and a half, a mile and a half of a side path next to that roadway, that could in part be accommodated, or it could, as part of the repaving that's proposed, could be better accommodated there, and perhaps we could even go further and put in place that side path. My greatest concern about that segment of the trail is that we are relying in significant part on Kimberly Clark. They're a great member of the community, they're very supportive of the River Trail, but you know what? A couple of times since I've lived in town, I haven't been there this long, they've, you know, there's been threats of factory shutdowns, and it's occurred elsewhere in the country, and it just makes me wonder. I'm glad that we've been lucky so far, who knows how long we'll be lucky? I would rather get any easements and accommodation we need from that company now, while they're here in place and supportive. I think it's really important to take care of the moment, to take advantage of the moment and deal with that. And the other piece of it that's really pretty simple of the River Trail is the West Street sidewalk segment. And that is also of particular interest to me, because my husband's really interested and involved in the Industrial Heritage Trail. And all you really need in that heritage trail is a sidewalk you can actually walk on, which is not currently in place on West Street. If anyone's walked down there, it's in dismal condition. Putting those sidewalks in, so that they're safely utilized, really makes it a wonderful part of the network in downtown, and could invite a number of people to take advantage of it. And we can put in place that historic trail, which I think will bring people to town who aren't coming today. So those are my two areas of particular interest that I wanted to raise tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucia. Jeff Winter, please.
Jeff Winter, 22 Maury Road. If you guys could take a look, I believe it's page 11 in your packets, at least that's how it was listed on the Post for your revised agenda. It starts with a letter February 20th regarding the Bar Grant Planning Committee. While you guys look that up, I'll just do a quick piggyback on the River Trail, that, yes, it's very important that we get that done, and I think every single road that's considered to be part of the River Trail should be looked at when it's being fixed, so that the trail can be accommodated. One of those includes Erickson Road, which I believe is on tap to be repaired either this year, this coming fiscal year, or the year after that. That connects, of course, to Aldrich Road, which connects to Brookfield. If we miss the opportunity to make that section of road viable for the trail by paving and not making sense now, we've missed a huge opportunity. And that is the longest segment as well, if you go from Aldrich to Erickson, and then you're up to Harry Brook Park. That is the, those two segments are the longest, yet realistically, they're probably the least expensive segments, actually, they are the least expensive segments to take care of to add to the trail. So if you're interested in the trail and hooking up to Brookfield ASAP, that's the place to focus. But should Pickett District be taken care of? Absolutely. No question about it. Also, hate has no home here. So for those of you who were unhappy with what happened at the Thompsons Restaurant, as I think we all were, it's not just time to say, "Well, I didn't invite Mr. Pressler," or "I don't agree with Mr. Pressler." I expect you to denounce him. And if you don't denounce him, that says a lot about yourselves. Lastly, the Bar Grant Steering Committee, a letter sent on February 20th. They note that there's $30,000 in the budget for this project, however, the bid is over $40,000. Now, they say they're pleased to let you know that the committee is going to work with the Economic Development Corporation to raise funds to pay for the differential. The committee will not be asking for any supplemental appropriation. Well, if you approve this without secure funding, is that how government operates? Now, we already know that the Economic Development Corporation, and three of you sit on that, has already had to input funds into errors by the Riverfront Revitalization Committee/BAR Grant Committee. And that is not what economic development funds are for, and they're not there to pay because they couldn't raise enough money. So if that same group of people is saying, "You know, you can trust me, you can trust us to raise that money," are they just going to take more from the Economic Development Corporation, the corporation that is there to bring tax-paying entities to town, employers to town, to enhance our community and the economic development in it? I don't think so. And I know that you, Mayor, have wanted to earmark an additional $100,000 for the Economic Development Corporation, which is really quite unprecedented. The first donation to that 501(c)(3) was roughly about $35,000 from this town council. If you're going to make that kind of commitment, which I don't mind doing, it has to be strictly used for economic development, not for studies, and certainly not to cover costs for government committees. If they bid it out, if they didn't do a proper job of budgeting, redo the budget. If you can't afford the study, you can't afford the study.
Jeff, you're at four minutes.
But until you guys get a firm footing on what this is, from a financial standpoint, if you approve it, I think that's kind of dereliction of duty to the taxpayers. Lastly, I would tell you that I think, again, for the second time in a month, this committee actually is held illegal, or certainly improper, executive sessions. They, you will see in your notes, that references were checked after presentations, references were checked on February 13th and 19th. They had a meeting on February 13th that was never discussed in the minutes, although they did have an executive session. On the 19th, none of these references were discussed, and they had an executive session. That meeting lasted an hour. When they came out of executive session, they had 25 minutes left, according to their minutes. And all of a sudden, not only did they vote to approve this vendor, which is $10,000 more than was approved, they, as you will see, if you read the paper in your packet, all of a sudden, they had a final recommendation, fully vetted and written out, comparing cost and everything else.
Jeff, I'm being generous here.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Please do your homework. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Jeff McBrady, please.
Good evening. Jeff McBrady, 28 Kent Road. I know this is a real sad song when I stand up here, because it's all about the Board of Education. Okay, two meetings ago, I asked a question to this council and the Board of Education, because I went to their meeting, and I asked, "What kind of a return are we getting on our investment?" So I have to go back in time to 1987 to tell you how my investment was a failure, four times, by the Board of Education. 1987, my son quit school as a sophomore, okay, because he couldn't read, he couldn't tell the days of the month, the weeks of the year, and he could not tell time. He was shoved through until he could take no more, so he quit. Okay, that's ridiculous. Now we move forward to my daughter. Daughter quit school as a sophomore as well, because she was also shoved along and could not continue with the harassment by students, and the school board did nothing, no matter what, we went to them several times, they still didn't do anything to rectify this. Okay, so my daughter couldn't handle this anymore, so she quit. Another failure of the Board of Education. Move forward to 2012. My granddaughter quit school as a senior, because she was feeling because of her bipolar disorder. She was, 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 disorder problem. And school did not make any attempt to help her to complete her senior year and graduate. They wouldn't even allow her to do her work at home and turn the work in. Total failure by the Town and the Milford Board of Education. Now, we move on to 2016. My grandson, he managed to graduate. He had difficulty reading and was made to take algebra for three years as an elective, even though he would never use it, ever. And when he graduated, he could not write his name in script. Still today, he prints his name. And that's because the cursive is only taught in the third grade. You learn it one year, and you're forgetting one year. Okay? If they're going to teach somebody how to do something, do it right all the way or don't do it at all. Now, we move forward to this year. At Dunkin' Donuts, I asked a young junior, a lady working at Dunkin' Donuts, if she could change a 20 for me because all I had was 15 20s. That's a lot of money. And I asked her how much that was, and she said, "I don't know. I don't know how to add, subtract, multiply, or divide. They don't teach me that in school." Now, this is her exact words. "If I don't have a calculator, I am lost." She said, "If the register here didn't tell me how much change was to be returned, she would be totally lost." Now, you're telling me if the Board of Education is treating the students right? Now, this is only five people in a long period of time. You're talking 30 years. Okay? But this is just five. So how many others slipped through the cracks? How many other students quit because they couldn't take no more? Because they wasn't learning? Because they were shoved through? Because no child left behind? Now, we'll put off over this year, and we'll shove them on to the next grade. We don't have to worry about it anymore. That's not the right way. Okay? And the Board of Education is asking for a lot of money again this year. 71% of the total budget. I don't think they deserve 1%. Not even, matter of fact, not even one cent. The town's budget is less than what it was last year, and the Board of Education, they want 2.59%? I don't think they deserve a cent. And you folks really have to start taking this seriously, okay? Because from my perspective, we elected you folks to run the business of the town with the Finance Department and control the Board of Education. But the Board of Education controls you. Okay? You tell me if that's right. I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the list, sir.
Thank you. With the council's pleasure, I would like to do the proclamation before the remarks, if that's okay? Since we have Julius Wiggins people here.
Back.
And as every year, we want to thank you for everything that you've done for the awareness. And I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas aplastic anemia is a rare and serious disease where a person's bone marrow fails to make enough blood cells. And whereas aplastic anemia can appear at any age, in any race or gender, between 600 and 900 people in the United States being diagnosed each year. And whereas many people who have aplastic anemia can be successfully treated with prompt care with blood and marrow stem cell transplants, offering a cure for some people with the disease. And whereas individuals with aplastic anemia often require specialized medical and support services to ensure their health and safety and to support families' resilience as they manage the financial burdens that aplastic anemia can present. And whereas the Julius Wiggins Foundation, formed in honor of local resident Julia Nelson, is now celebrating six years of service to families affected by aplastic anemia and having provided over $215,000 in financial assistance and $120,000 in funding for research and spearheading an awareness effort called Operation Wear Red in order to educate parents, families, professionals, and the general public about aplastic anemia and its effects. Now, therefore, I pass Mayor of New Milford to hereby proclaim March 3 through March 9, 2019, as Aplastic Anemia Awareness Week in New Milford, Connecticut, and encourage all employees and residents to participate in aplastic anemia awareness activities.
We're just going to take just one minute to talk a little bit about Julius Wiggins. This is Doris Clark, who is Julius' grandmother. And we are so pleased to partner with the Town of New Milford once again. We are thrilled with every, all of the support. A lot of people in this room do support us with sponsorships, participation, donations, and we're very, very happy about that. We do have our office there on Bank Street, so we're very tied to New Milford. And the main thing that we want to communicate to everyone is every day, these children and families that we're serving are really fighting almost a hidden fight. So a lot of them have to choose between whether they're going to buy groceries or whether they're going to pay co-pays. With the rarity of this disease, there's not a lot of assistance out there. Julius Wiggins is one of the only foundations in the country, just right here in our little sleepy area. And it's because of you guys that we're able to serve these families. And we're coming up to almost 200 families that we've been able to serve across the country. This year, we are, because of the wonderful awareness efforts and getting word out there, we're actually, we've actually had to close applications for a time because we just don't have the funding. So we are going to be reopening that as funds come in. But we really now, more than ever, could use your help to help these families so that a mother does not have to choose between whether she can be with her child, whether she can fix her car, whether she has childcare for another child. And these families that are in the fight of their lives will be able to have the assistance that they need. So thank you so much for the proclamation, Mayor, and for all of the support of the entire town.
I would like to go to Mayor's remarks. And first, starting off, as we're continuing our budget hearings, they're resuming on, starting on Wednesday, the 27th, and according to Councilman Bear, weather permitting. So we're hoping for good weather. On Wednesday, the 27th, we have the registrar of voters coming for their budget, the tax assessor, tax collector, probate judge, personnel, fire marshal and emergency management, and the police department. On Thursday, the 28th, we'll have the fire departments themselves come, the Board of Education, that will be on Thursday, the 28th. We then move to March 1st, which would be Monday. We have the Health Department, the LEP, the Local Emergency Planning Budget, Youth Agency, Town Clerk, Library, Building, Social Services. On Tuesday, we'll have the Senior Center. The ambulance will be coming. The land use boards discussion from Public Works. Then on Wednesday, we will have the Sewer Commission. We will have the Commission on the Arts, the Film Commission, Farmland Preservation, Candlewood Lake Authority, Parks and Rec, New Milford Center Cemetery, the Northwest Regional Mental Health, the Children's Center, Housatonic Valley Association, the Service Officers, which are our veterans, and our nonprofit grant requests, our IT Department, our Economic Development Department, and also our Riverfront Revitalization Committee. Also, any other committees that you, the council, or the Board of Finance would like to continue to talk to, we can bring those at any time that you so choose. Next, I'd also like to talk about the proposed Mayor's Budget. For those of you that would like to see that budget, you can go to our town website, www-newmilford.com. You can click on the Government section, which is up on the top. Then to the left, you will see Budgets. Then there'll be a dropdown. You'll click 2019-20 Budget. And then there'll be Presentations. Click there, and you'll see all the presentations that will be listed here on PowerPoint. When they do the presentations, they'll be listed, and also the Mayor's Budget is there now. So you can take a look at that. Also, concerning Finance, Councilman Mullin, it's expressed Dr. Mullin, that there was an error in the audit report. We spoke to the auditors. They will be here on Wednesday to talk about just the publishing mistake. And good news, we're getting a $2,500 credit. So that's excellent. Next, I'd like to talk also a little bit about John Pettibone. So Thursday night after our meeting, matter of fact, it was Joe on the back over there had mentioned that they had thought there was a smell of gas. So afterwards, I went to John Pettibone. I actually asked the fire marshal to go there. He was already there once, came back again, checked to make sure there was no safety concerns. There were none. Also, I've asked our facilities to look at the boiler itself because we did have an increase in costs for the last two months and what we can do to help mitigate those rising costs. So they're working on that, and I thank them for that. Moving on to Roads, Roads Update. So we're continuing our Roads program. Right now, they're in the design phase to be doing our roads. We're also, the Municipal Roads Committee will be holding public forums for the roads that we're going to be doing. It'll be at John Pettibone, so the public can give their input on the roads. Also, in the next three weeks, our pothole machine's coming. So I'm really excited about that. I'm excited the fact that we'll be able to do more potholes with less manpower, and these potholes will be able to last. So I'm very excited about that, and the public will be able to take a look as we unveil this new pothole machine. Next, just a couple of updates from some of our departments to just kind of keep you aware. First, I'd like to talk about Social Services. Social Services has been very busy with the Energy Assistance Program. And those are for folks who have not been able to keep up with their electric bills and are seeking out options. So I'd like to thank the Social Services and our, excuse me, our youth for their help and those assistance as well. I apologize. Also, the Food Bank is steadily busy with an average of 158 residents that they helped this week. Also, they're completing a financial education component with the students at the Culinary Institute. So it's great news that once they get a job, that they're also going to be helped with their finances to help them achieve financial success also with work. Also, with the New Milford Health Department, they've been involved in public health emergency planning meetings to help decide the future of Connecticut's mass dispensing areas. There are currently 41 mass dispensing areas. They're called MDA's in the state of Connecticut, and they're for distributing medication to the public in the event of a public health emergency. New Milford is one of the MDA's, and for the residents of New Milford, New Fairfield, Sherman, and Washington. So I thank Mike Cresspin for his work on this. Also, they've been working with a group called the Western Connecticut Clean Air Action Committee. And that's putting up, interested in monitoring air quality in Western Connecticut due to concerns about emissions being generated from the power plant under construction of Dover Plains. We are now working with Canterbury School to see about setting up a monitoring station so that we, as long as the other surrounding towns, can monitor that. And also, good news, it's going to help our students learn more about our environment. So I think that's a wonderful endeavor. And there'll be more to the Town Council as we move forward with that particular project. Also, I'd like to talk about the Senior Center, what they've been doing as well. So they provided as well assistance to 54 individuals with food insecurity, also with medical insurance services and health and safety issues totaling 82 units of service. They've had 405 participants in various programs and activities. Below are some of the highlights. They had the children from the Children's Center pay them a visit for their monthly story time with seniors. Part of their Never Stop Learning Series, they're happy to report another round of Learn to Speak Spanish classes that are happening there. Also, they celebrated February birthdays with cupcakes, balloons, and flowers donated from Lenny's Flower Shop. So thank you, Lenny. And in partnership with the New Milford Police Department and the New Milford Substance Abuse Prevention Council, New Milford's Triad for Senior Safety held a Drug Takeback Day for unused and expired medications to make New Milford community safer, as we collected over 100 pounds of those drugs. So I'd like to thank all of our departments that do a wonderful job for our community and for our taxpayers. And with that, I'd like to move on with the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Item five, our Consent Agenda. Move to approve the Consent Agenda, which is one item, item 5A.
That move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Item six, we will not be going into executive session.
So item number six, number A, because this is a donation of land, this shouldn't be an executive session. It should actually be a public session. So I'd like to make a, entertain a motion to discuss the donation of land to the Town of New Milford concerning, with the Community Investment Officer and Attorney Grimes.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Kathy?
For the record, I'm Kathy Fasagno, the Community Investment Officer for the town. And we had talked about this the last time, Housatonic Avenue property we could start with. And I'll just pass out the information. And Russ Durenzo from Arcadis was going to try to come here, but he had to have shoulder surgery this past week.
Thank you, Kathy.
So it's not a lot of good idea. So.
Is this the same letter, Kathy, that we had before?
It's the same letter.
Pink letter.
The second page was an email back from him when he explained his information. And he basically just said, "Since the site is not home remediation, there's no subsertification available." But they can't say more than what they say in the letter. And they got 20 tests that saw nothing, and a transaction screen is very limited but was appropriate for the site. So more sampling is desired beyond the two samples they took that can do it, but would be a waste of money, was his opinion. So it was a residential site. It's hard enough you want to wait and see if he can come once he's healed up and can drive again. But he just felt, as a professional environmental scientist, that this was adequate, and he's confident that the site is clean.
What's the council's leisure? Do we want to, do you want to wait until we can hear from, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly?
Russ Durenzo.
Mr. Durenzo personally? Is that the flavor from the council?
Well, since I'm the one who was questioning the lack of certification or just exactly how clean the site was, if he can, according to this email, and I believe that he's saying this, that he can't provide anything more than what he put in this letter, then there's no sense in exercising him to come here and say it, in my opinion. That's just me. I stand by what I said, though. I think that we don't really know if it's devoid of all contamination, other than what he said here, that the places they tested were okay. We don't have any record of anything that was removed from the site. Truckloads of items were removed, but we don't know what was in that material.
I think it's construction debris, just some things that were dumped over there.
Okay. Thank you.
He's also saying they got 20 pits.
Oh, no, he said pits, didn't he? Said pits?
Yeah, 20 pits.
Oh, there you go.
Okay.
So is the council's purview to entertain a motion now, to wait until we hear from him personally? What's the choice of the council?
I have some more questions I'd like to ask him personally. So I would feel more comfortable of asking. So I would feel more comfortable of asking him to have it more on record than just an email.
So I think maybe within a couple of weeks, he might be okay.
Okay.
Kathy, could you check to see if there is any record of what was removed? I know it said construction material, but someone took it. Did they dump, maybe you could find out where it was dumped?
It was brought to Danbury, sent to earth movers, I think it said in the letter.
Okay. So nothing was ever tested?
It was 68 tons of concrete and 28 yards of garbage and debris, including tires. Went to Winterbrook, it was also located in Danbury.
Okay. So there's no record of what or anything, so that's, okay, thanks.
Nothing that said hazardous or anything in that?
No, no. The only reason originally that they had a concern was because they said it looked like there had been dumping on the site. That's why they originally would put the brakes on over a year ago. And so that's why they had the contractor go in and dig it up, and then they did some more testing. And originally, the test in it, they found it was some, let's see, some like hydrocarbons they found in the soil. But I think it was just decided that that was just very confined. It might have been somebody had a little fire there, and they had dumped gas on it at one point to get a fire going, something like that. So that was very confined, and they removed that and didn't find any more. He dealt with it fine.
Okay. So Mike?
Do we know why this particular owner wants to give it to the town? I mean, who gives things away?
It's in the 100-year flood plain. It's on the river. There's a sewer easement that goes through the middle of it. So it's just, the value of property right now of this lot isn't very high. The assessor has it at 80-something thousand. And you know that Perry Drive lot that just sold for, I think, 20,000? So the value of this is very low. So I guess he figures it's maybe they can get more of a tax write-off. They're benefiting more in that way, I'm not really sure.
Okay.
They don't pay real taxes.
The easement, it runs right where, through the middle? Is that on the map?
Yeah. You can't really see on that what it does.
And it's an easement for, well, that's a tiny map.
The sewer. Yeah. Yeah, it like bisects it, just like.
And that's an easement for the sewer from where?
From the pump station.
Right. I see.
Kathy, we have a cost of what the landowner paid to have it removed?
We don't have that now.
Just, to me, it sounds a little strange that somebody's trying to donate a piece of land, can't sell it. So then we tell them, we don't want it unless you test it. They may go out and spend more money to remove stuff. And now they want to do it back now so we can take it. So I'd like to know what the cost was to remove it, if you could find out.
I mean, it's obvious why, I mean, why you'd want to get rid of it. You're paying property taxes on a regular basis, and by donating, probably have a tax write-off. The question remains is, and I feel confident that there's not an issue with it, but we want to ask you a lot of questions. Questions, is it something of value to the town that has? It's a real question. And that's what we have to decide at council.
You know, I also have some questions about why a Phase 1 and Phase 2 has not been completed there. I mean, we know just up the river, the outfall side of the brass mill had one of the highest concentrations of PCBs. So, and this is just downriver of it, you know?
Back when, I think it was December of 2017, I think the town decided they would pay for it. We got an estimate for a Phase 1, and it was going to be about almost $20,000 of a Phase 1 done.
These are very expensive tests. And but it couldn't have been, to get all the stuff that you said you took out, that they took out of here, that was on this list, that's a pretty substantial cost to do that as well. And I mean, I also have a question of, what value is it to us if we're not getting taxes on it?
It might be good to even just have this guy come and answer any questions.
I would like, yeah, I'd like to talk to him again, like be willing to hear it. But I'm very skeptical. I mean, you know, we've made these mistakes before, and it's right up the road. You know, and we're embroiled in a lawsuit because of it.
So what I'll try to do is see if he can come to the meeting in two weeks.
Great. Yeah, to talk to him.
Great.
Thank you.
And then there was the other property. I don't know if you want to talk about that one at all?
More of this one?
Yep.
So this one is next to Torrey's Cave. And, yeah, this is a donation. Do you want to talk about it?
We can talk about it briefly, and then we'll bring it back also for the next council meeting.
So the property that's outlined in blue is the one that is up for donation. And it's about 35 acres. And the property that's just to the south of it is owned by Weontonaga. And that's Torrey's Cave property. And then to the north of it, the one in the middle, that just has access on Squash Hollow, is already owned by the town. The town accepted a donation of that property a few years back. So this is one, the blue trail goes up through it. The Conservation Commission believes it has high conservation value. So if you all are interested, could we refer to the planning commission? Maybe Conservation Commission wants to.
That's his donations.
So this would land under donations?
Yes, donations.
Okay. I'm CBS.
So what we can do is, did you guys want to have the owner of the property come? At the next meeting as well?
Yeah.
So we'll ask him to come.
This is another donation to the town?
Yes.
What are we getting on this right now for taxes? I'd like to know that number.
I've got it downstairs.
I'd also like to know about the Pushtonic Avenue tracks too.
What are we getting now? What are we not going to get by taking them on as?
We'll have both of those. I think this is in a 490, right? But we'll get all that.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you guys want to get ahead of time?
Going back to another piece of property, we have people looking at Trail Committee. And that piece does, is part of that. I don't know if anyone commented at all. Do you guys know the piece that she's talking about? That it's part of the proposed bike trail to the Pushtonic Avenue? Is that something that would help as far as easements go or not?
Depending on where the trail goes ultimately. If it goes along the river, it was going to be useful. The original location was that it would go through there.
How many of those easements that along, there's a lot of houses there, do we have any that have agreed to it or no?
When we made the application to the state for the grant, we actually pointed this particular piece out to them on a map that we presented saying it may be a brown hill site. You know, it might have the potential of some environmental liability, but that it was within the sculpt. So it has been identified in that plan for the bar, yeah, for the riverfront colonization. But not for the town.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
The next personal policies and procedures. We had some additional information we needed to get to you, so I had this pulled off the agenda. So we'll move to the number seven.
Okay. Item number seven is discussion and possible action on the motion, with a motion to accept the bar grant. Steering Committee requests to authorize the mayor to sign and enter into an agreement for a comprehensive market analysis and the economic strategies plan with the recommended consultant. Do you have a motion? Anybody have a second?
Second.
Did you send your motion, Kathy? That was a motion.
Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor, and town council members. I'm pleased to be here tonight to submit a recommendation to you for a consultant for a comprehensive market analysis and economic strategies plan consultant. Currently, the budget, as it stands, has $30,000 in the budget. The submitted price by the consultant is $40,000 for 120. We are not here to ask for any supplemental appropriation. The Riverfront Revitalization Committee and the Corporation for New Milford's Economic Development are jointly in the process of raising funds to pay the differential. That's how much we believe this project is important to this town and how much we stand behind it. So we will not be asking, as I said, for any supplemental appropriation. The town, through the bar grant steering committee, this consultant grant is a match to the bar grant that we got from the state of Connecticut. That was the town's match. So we sent out an RFP. We received eight proposals. We reviewed them. We went through them. Even though some of them were way over budget, we did read them because, just to learn what they had to say and to see what suggestions there were. We picked four finalists, and we had interviews with them. In addition to the bar committee, as the interview committee, we also had Mayor Pete Bass joining us, Kathy Costinietta, the community investment officer, our zoning enforcement officer and town planner, Laura Regan, and our Riverfront Committee advisory members, Marjorie Feldberg and Jean Solomon. So that was the interviewing crew and the evaluation crew. This study is not just for the downtown or just for the riverfront. It is for the whole town of New Milford, because you can't stand one section by itself. What happens outside the downtown affects the downtown and vice versa. So this is a town-wide plan. It will not only serve to inform the master plan for the riverfront. We're currently, as many of you know, going through the plan of conservation and development process. And these findings will also help to inform that. And it will help to inform the town in general. Hopefully soon, we will have economic development staff, and they will be able to work with this and to use it. And the corporation also, it will help give them a way forward. So we were very pleased to interview the, like I said, the four consultants. And after careful deliberation, we unanimously voted to recommend Camoin Associates. Their proposal was consistent to fulfill the objectives of our RFP. They were closest to the budgeted amount, even though the amount was 30 and they were 40. We had proposals that came in as high as 116,000 in the 80s. I think I supplied you the list of what the charges were. We did consult with references for our top two finalists. And Camoin's references were outstandingly enthusiastic. They have been retained again and again. For example, the city of Grotten, Connecticut works with them on an ongoing basis. They are experts in municipal financing for economic development projects and are currently working with, I think, New Britain and maybe New Haven on TIF financing projects and how to make that happen and how that money can be appropriated to help the town. They've worked with Canton, Enfield, Hartford, Middleton, New Britain, Putnam, Suffolk, Windsor Locks in the state of Connecticut. One of the references we spoke with was the Connecticut Main Street Program, for whom they did a guidebook for communities across the state. What they will be giving us is an economic basis assessment and a business profile, as well as strategic plans that will inform and support work on the river master plan and increase in economic vitality and opportunity for all of New Milford's citizens and businesses. They will develop a matrix-style summary of recommendations and strategies on how the town can proactively engage with development and business communities to make our plans reality. We think that they are very strong, that they understand the economic goals of the town. And just as they have done in 200 other communities, they will provide New Milford with the tools that we need for success. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
The 30 grand we have already, it was from the town's budget?
Yes, it's appropriated.
And so, what do you need from us if you're not asking for any more?
We need authorization for the mayor to sign a contract with them.
You did have a couple of interviews that came under 40,000, but apparently...
The lowest one was 36.
Yeah.
And then next was, I think, 38, nine or something. Well, we changed the page. 37, nine. So, you know, we're within $4,000 of the lowest bid.
Well, if you're very happy with them, I got, you know, I don't have a problem with that. So, you know, $116,000, I think that was. Even at, what, you had one interview that was 70,000, 68,000 or forward? You know, wow. Maybe I should have done that for a living.
Not too late, Walter.
Yes, it is. It is too late, yes.
You're a grade school teacher.
You're wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so there's a $10,000 deficit to bring in these people who are certainly, they sound like they're well schooled to do this. How much have you raised already towards that 10?
$5,500.
Sixty-five hundred. We got another strike.
$6,500. So we're not too far from raising it.
I see. Thank you.
Works for me.
The only thing I'll say is you'll have, our town attorney will review the contract, of course.
Yes.
Who's got it this afternoon?
No, I actually got the other contract this afternoon.
So any other questions? There's a motion on the floor, there's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to just recognize Julie Bailey and Lucy Wildrick, Wildrick, who is on the committee and is here tonight in support as well. And we look forward to having you be part of this whole study and to be there for public input. And one of the requirements of our RFP is that they come to the town council to get your input before the final draft, so that you are, you know, and you are part of the process.
Now, how will we intertwine this with the POCD that's happening right now too? Is that, is there a way that, you know, Kathy will be involved in both, I assume, or?
Right. And then the way the timing will work, it will be there to inform the POCD committee.
So this will be done, how long will it be?
As soon as I get the contract, it should be coming to me tomorrow. I will turn it around to Matt, and we'd like to get going in about two weeks or so.
And how long is it?
About three months. It's about, it's shorter than a master plan process, three to three and a half months.
How long will it take for us to raise the remaining, what, 4,400?
Yeah, we should get there.
Yeah, 400, a week.
Yeah.
A week?
A week, yeah.
Cool.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, public works.
Public works. Items A through C. We'll start with A. The state grant application pertaining to the new seven pedestrian safety improvements, matching funds of $400,000. Does everybody remember that from our last meeting?
And I'd like to just speak to the council for a moment on this particular grant application. So a couple of things, basically concerning the beginning of this conversation with DPW was Greg Osipoff, our finance director, couldn't be here tonight as he was, his road was blocked with down trees. So one of the things that we did want to bring up is moving forward, which was suggested by this, some members of the council, is we're going to be setting up a grant application policy. And within that policy, it's going to designate, prior to approval from this body and the Board of Finance, where we're going to get our portion of the grant funds and where they're coming from, and also how much that it is. So moving forward, we can be guaranteed of that through a policy. Second, I brought this particular application to the town council last time. And as a method of funding, was recommending the use of the landfill settlement fund. After much consideration and being educated a little better, I would recommend that we do not take it out of landfill settlement. One of the things that I will talk about as we move forward with this particular project is where I feel maybe we could take the funding from. But I wanted to let the council know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Also, kind of looking at this particular project is, as a council, and then I would ask the same of the Board of Finance. Where do we see New Milford in 20 years? Do we see New Milford with a need of connectivity? Do we need sidewalks? Will we need sidewalks in 20 years? If the answer to that question is yes, then this is a pretty good deal. It's 20 cents on the dollar to get it done. If you don't think you need the connectivity as a council, it's pretty easy. You'll know when it's all done. You know when it's all done, right? But if you do, there's a couple of funding choices that we do have, options. First choice is, you can hit the taxpayer with it. Put it in the budget. That raises your taxes already. Another method we could do is we have a very robust unassigned, undesigned, as it used to be called. And we have the ability on projects such as these to use the unassigned for stuff such as this. And by doing it that way, you don't impact the taxpayer at budget, especially this budget time around. And secondly, you're not hitting the landfill settlement fund, which isn't the proper use for it, is what I heard from the public and from our council. So that being said, Mike?
Could I have?
Yes.
Okay. There's a question for you, too, but since you brought it up. Using the, an alternate funding rather than the settlement fund, that's great. But I had a question last week and I just want to ask it again, Mike. Is there a deadline to, I mean, this has been going on a while. And another question is, does the location of this sidewalk, I mean, we all know they're in separate places, but can those locations be amended? Are we the ones choosing the locations?
So let me back up to the financing side first. I'll give you the research that, you know, we got from our liaison consultant, who administers the program for the state. Effectively, there's no real deadline. What, the opportunity is really, as council, you have kind of three options going forward. You can, I think, take Mayor Bass's, you know, suggestion. If you don't think the sidewalks are needed, you know, can kind of basically vote on that tonight. You can send him a letter saying, you know, we basically withdraw the opportunity and they would reallocate the funds as need be to other, you know, applicants or processes that have applied for those funds. What we're talking about right now, or second option is, what we're looking at is the design portion of the project right now. So from the state's perspective, all that needs to be allocated currently is the design portion of the project. That's roughly about $70,000 of our share. The real cut, if you want to say, in the timeline comes at what we call 30% design. We basically do some preliminary engineering study, figure out kind of all the preliminary data, maybe talk to some of the residents and really kind of go to then a public informational meeting or public hearing. That's typically done at 30%. We'll have some schematic designs, probably just some rough budget estimates at that point. That's kind of the breakpoint. Once, once you have that public info meeting and the town makes a decision that we want to move forward and authorize further design, you're basically locked into the program at that point from a reimbursement standpoint.
That means you've chosen where it's going to be put. See, my issue with this is partly where the large section going south of the high school, because there are no residents there. In the condos, there are some residents. But we're putting a sidewalk all the way down the road that we will ultimately be maintaining because there are no, I mean, there are some condos, business condos there. Perhaps they will come out and take care of it. But it isn't as if we're helping people who live there. If you go north from the pizza place, which is on the other side of Cumberland Farms, there's a wetlands there. There's huge barrier, you know, barricades and one heart bus stop there. But it's all wetlands. It drops right off. And obviously, there are no homes there. I just wondered if we might want to reconsider. It's nice to have it in front of the high school, I guess. But then I say, well, where are they going? No one, I mean, they usually don't come out the south end of the high school. They're all going over to the pizza place and Dunkin' Donuts and whatever. So is the location of the sidewalks, if we were to go forward with all this, is that up to us or is it up to someone else?
It's, we, since we've applied for the grant, we, I believe we've already done this once and Mayor Bass actually sent a letter to the state requesting that we relocate, I guess I'm going to call it, a section of the sidewalk from, I don't remember exactly what was Larson Road and maybe a couple of other small sections of Route Seven to the Asperdakav section. So, and that was approved.
Okay, so then, Mike, just so I understand, Mike, the process, so I'm not thinking in the wrong direction. But if you go through the, I know, I understand the 30% rule, but then you sit down and you start talking to the public. The public that you're talking, by then, you've already made a decision where it's going to be. Isn't that the point of the discussion with the public? Shouldn't we be asking the public first what they think about where it's going to be? Because I certainly don't have a clue how many people in this town would benefit from having sidewalks here versus out here. I mean, there are people who definitely need the sidewalks to get themselves back and forth. I just, I don't know. I think we're doing that little cart before the horse again, where we're making a decision to spend a lot of money. I understand it's a good deal, twenty cents on the dollar. I don't argue that. And I think it's wonderful to have the ability to get people around and we can expand on this for all the years to come. But I just, we, have we really looked at where it would be most needed? In front of the high school is, looks nice, but, but they get on the buses in here. Where are they going other than maybe to go north on that one side? That's all. I just, I'm not saying it's wrong. I just don't understand that it seems to be a little backwards to me.
So this grant is, I would understand it at least. What it's applied for is design and construction of sidewalks that the town substantially has decided, you're right, it wants. It's not a planning grant to make that determination.
But how are we as the town deciding? That's what I'm asking. When I said, is it you, meaning the town?
Well, I believe our POCD recommends this particular, anywhere along Route Seven, it recommends it. So can we, can we pick any section along there? I believe we can if there is determined it's a, there's a better section to do with the grant application.
But determined by who?
I don't believe we're going out and trying to make planning decisions as to strategically what of the...
Okay, I'm not asking you to do that. Don't get me wrong.
Twenty-five thousand feet along Route Seven where we prioritize first, second, third, fourth.
But who determined? You said as determined, but who's determining that this is? Is it DPW? Is it the mayor? Is it the council? Is it people in wheelchairs? Is it a study? Has anybody ever counted how many kids ever walk in front of the high school? How many people really, other than the road runners, go down towards them? Who goes by that wetlands across, you know, from Wetmore's? There's a pumping station there. Where are they going if they end, you know? I mean, what, I just, it's like sidewalks to nowhere. I don't see, I think it's great to have it twenty cents on the dollar, but if it's going nowhere, I don't know. I don't see that.
I, I would suggest that if it was, it could be a council decision and certainly we can send another letter requesting there be, you know, it's roughly seven thousand feet of sidewalk that we're doing, although some of that is on Asperdakav currently. But in total, the project right now is seven thousand feet, linear feet of sidewalk. If there's better sections, priority sections that the council would want us to consider, you know, certainly make that part of either your motion or we can, you know, further discuss it.
That's a question, that we can make a decision. It's not a foregone conclusion.
I, I don't, I don't believe our grant locks us into only those specific areas, but we have to justify to them why that's the case. That's, that's all, I believe we've done that once already and I wouldn't see why they wouldn't entertain another suggestion such as that.
Mike?
Yeah, I understand Katie's position because if a child or a student comes out of the high school, where are they going in front of the high school? That makes zero sense to me.
Well...
So let me just finish my thought, please, Mike.
Absolutely.
So what I was thinking that, that there's got to be a way to determine what is most used. I mean, we see, we all see people walking on Route Seven. And I can tell you, going from, let's say, Veterans Bridge to, let's say, McDonald's, there's always people walking there. So maybe that would be a good section. Or maybe the section from Willow Springs to Walmart might be a better section. There's got to be a way to determine who's using what and, you know, be able to help people stay safe and get the most bang for our buck. And see, I don't know. We'd have to rely on your expertise for that.
So I'll give you the philosophy that we used at least in, in a year and a half ago. There's a couple of programs in the state, but one's smart routes to school. In other words, walkability to schools. That's one criteria. Community centers, bus stops, other areas like that. Public properties that wouldn't otherwise get an opportunity, i.e. redevelopment of the site. I'll give you the example, is the old Executive Center Drive location that's being redeveloped now. Through that redevelopment, we're able to get them to install sidewalks. So as properties like that are developed, that's been our plan with the zoning commission. We just, I believe, have, I don't believe it's formally been accepted by the zoning and or by the council just yet, but there's a sidewalk and complete streets type plan that's coming forth to require, I guess I'm going to say, or at least make it part of the regulations in development along particular corridors, in this case, Route Seven and 202, to encourage or to require property development to install sidewalks. So the community center, Pettybone School, didn't have that opportunity. So places we originally picked really were philosophically places that would have no opportunity for that, in front of Saranova School, which is town property, in front of the high school, which is town property, et cetera. So yes, we did pick large stretches that had no other opportunity to get sidewalks. Nor did the town really have, obviously, the funds to pay for themselves. Whereas redevelopment opportunities, you know, they can roll that into, like I said, the Executive Center Drive. And there are several other ones that have done that, obviously, along, Stop and Shop, I believe Plaza did it along with their redevelopment, at least to some extent. The Coles Plaza, of course, installed them when they did their plaza. So, you know, we certainly made a progress on many of these sites and there's other sites along that stretch that still have that same opportunity. And then, you know, my suggestion is we do fill in the gaps still. And, you know, there's certainly maybe some gaps left, you know, when more of the majority of that, those properties are developed. But they're at least taxable properties and developable properties where the properties we're talking about are not, they're public properties currently and would not have that same opportunity. So philosophically, that's how we, you know, tried to determine or determine areas that were, you know, most effective to be, to be done. But certainly there's other areas that could be done, no doubt, along Route Seven. You can pick, you know, stretches all up and down that, you know, that section of road and that five-mile stretch that could be done.
Tom?
Mike, you know, I agree with Councilman, Councilwoman Francis and Councilman Gold. I like the sidewalk ideas, but I think they do need to be in places that have the need right now. I know the POCD from a decade ago said Route Seven needs to have sidewalks from end to end. I sat on that committee. I remember that and I remember the discussions. Having a high school student, they're coming out of one of the side doors, walking across the, near the barn, and they're going to Kimberly Clark, to Cumberland Farms, Dunkin' Donuts and the pizza place. I mean, that's the run, no matter what time, you know, after school, you're going by there before a basketball game or football games. That makes a lot of sense to me. I think maybe eventually from the pizza place to Savings Bank at there maybe would make sense down the line. But I think it's going to be more costly to build right next to that wetlands than it would be on a spot, let's say, as somebody suggested, from Willow Springs to Walmart. I see a boatload of people walking there. And you have the ability with the new executive center, putting in the sidewalks. Like I said, the stuff over at Stop and Shop is already there. I think that would make a lot more sense down there, as well as, as Michael said, from over the bridge. I mean, you go across the bridge, you can walk into Big Y, but you can't even get across the street to go to Dunkin' Donuts. And that stretch right there, I think, could use them almost all the time. That's where I see the highest amount of people crossing the roads. And it's just because it's, because a lot of the pedestrians are coming out of downtown and don't have cars, you know? My mom has a handful of friends that don't drive anymore and they, and they walk to Big Y. And they would like to walk up to Dunkin' Donuts, but they're afraid to cross the intersection. So that, to me, makes a little bit more sense. I would like to, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of pushing this forward, but I would really like us to take a real hard look and get the biggest bang for our buck right now that eventually will have that connectivity that we'll need out into the future. But right now, I think we really have to be very specific on where they go to where the highest concentration of pedestrians are. You know, I don't see kids right now walking in front of the high school. Like I said, they come out of one of the side doors. We all have kids that have gone there. And they walk across the parking lot, they either walk between the barn and the, and the little white shed, or they're on this side of the barn and the guardhouse and they're walking over. I just think it makes a little bit more sense to spend it where you see the footpath. I mean, they're, you'll see them pretty beaten on the side of the road. And a lot more input by us, I think, in the end, would be, would be very helpful for me.
Walter?
I hear the arguments and twenty cents on a dollar is a heck, heck of a deal, but again, I, I will agree with the other councilmen. We're going to have to be very definitive where we put this. And this is only for sidewalks. What about bus cut-ins? You know, buses are a pain in the neck. They stop right there in the road, willy-nilly. Where anybody raises their hand, the bus stops. I assume that's not part.
Is that true?
Not cutouts for buses. I believe we have at least one that I'm aware of at the Pettybone property, a bus shelter location, which is not, you know, anything other than the bus pulling to the side, to the shoulder of the road currently, is the way it's set up. And there'll be a sidewalk and a, and a small shelter for it. But other than that, Walter, no, let's call it additional pull-offs for the, for the buses outside the road traveling, is what we're suggesting, I think.
And Walter, real quick, though it doesn't have anything really to do with the update, but you did ask, real quick, I did meet with Hart and we are looking to put bus shelters, a very nice one right over here by the post office.
Oh, great.
All done up, nice.
Oh, okay.
And then a couple along Route Seven.
All right.
Mike?
Yeah, it's real quick. From what Mike was saying, and I understand the point you guys are saying where the roads are needed, but he also looked at potential for future grants and where it would be easier to get those grants. And those are the ones that, if I invest in church, let me know. Those were the ones you didn't put the road there because you feel those would be easier to get grants later on. Whereas the one in the place you picked might be more difficult to get grants in the future.
Think they'd be easier, well, there's a couple of other opportunities for them is maybe, to rephrase them, Mike, there's other opportunities for them, such as development. If they ever come in toward, you know, a site plan modification or opportunity, it would be, you know, available for us to incorporate it through that process, the land use review process, rather than a grant process. So it's going to be covered, you know, maybe some alternate ways. If we thought, you know, two or three or four years down the road, we have, you know, lots of these little blips, if you want to say, or gaps that still exist, and we can fly for another grant, I, I think it's, you know, certainly worthwhile to fill in those gaps at those times. But, you know, you just fill in when you have the opportunity, the funding opportunity. And right now, the funding opportunity is there, but these other properties will never get a development opportunity, or at least the majority of them. Will never get a development opportunity. So, you know, I'd suggest we pick them, you know, partly because of that. And like I said, I think it was a real, it's been a real push across the state for estate routes to school. So school locations are high priority, obviously, areas to encourage alternate forms of transportation, really, to get to school. So I know you, you know, we talked about, not a lot of kids there now, but we're trying to connect neighborhoods that can, that certainly have lots of the community there. And we do see lots of walking, particularly on, more on weekends. And I think I talked last time about the Elephant Trump area and the overflow parking in the high school parking lot. So we do see a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic there at that time. And to try to hook neighborhoods that have the ability to walk to school, to be able to get to, you know, to the high school in this case, you know, would be a great opportunity for an alternate form of transportation. But unless we get it from the school first, you know, you can do all the other sidewalks, you know, throughout the zone. If you don't have them going to the school, then nobody's going to walk to school.
Listen, my only comment about the school is you put the sidewalk out on Route Seven, the kids are going to find a shortcut. They're going to walk all the way out to Route Seven and make a left and walk up and down. They're going to cut through the grass. So that was my point about it.
I want to, I want to thank the gentleman for coming in. One of the forefathers writing this for the waste landfill. It's refreshing to hear somebody who was there when the inception.
Forefathers, what do you imply by your age?
Unfortunately, there's not too many of us left. Yes. And so, you know, it's always been a sticking point of the language and stuff. So thanks for the clarity and I was one of them. I didn't like the way the language was. But I agree with the other councilmen, you know, we can find certain areas to implement the sidewalks. Sidewalks, obviously, for safety, obviously for foot traffic and to increase the volume, to increase stores and people coming down to downtown, connecting down there. As someone just said, you know, McDonald's down to the Big Y, if there was a sidewalk there, you'd have somebody park at one of those and maybe walk into, you know, the separate stores and stuff. And that would bring an influx of people downtown and not only there, but, you know, all up and down Route Seven. So if we could break this into pieces and find the spots that would work. And also there was mention of, you know, Canterbury as well. And a lot of kids walk down from Canterbury and they spend their money down here.
It's in the project.
It's in the project. Again, trying to get people... It's in the project. So, again, trying to get people from one spot to another in safety and stuff, especially when there's a downtown available. So, again, I agree with my councilman, and I thank the gentleman tonight for coming. Thank you very much.
Walter?
Apparently, there's no time limit on this thing. So what is, what is the will of the council here? We need to do more homework? Is that our, is that our feeling about this?
Well, is the thought process, if you, of course, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, there's still some ability to change some of the design.
Correct. And I, I guess I would advocate, from, from the standpoint that we're in right now, from hearing what I heard from our liaison correctly, is go through that informational process earlier and get input from people that, where these, you know, where it's best to get them, have us redraft a letter that says, our public informational meeting sought out that 1, 2, 3, 4 is better than, you know, the ones currently in there. Can we switch this length of sidewalk for that length of sidewalk? We estimate it will be in the same, you know, cost range. I mean, I think we have to, we have an obligation, obviously, to give them a similar matching program. But in either case, you know, I, I wouldn't see where that would be against the rules. And generally, when you do it through the public forum, particularly with these federal grant funded programs, they, I think they take that a lot more seriously, that the public has weighed in and said, this is really what we want to see.
And Mike, do you recommend that we entertain, at least for the design portion, whether it's seventy-nine thousand or?
Yeah, our share is about seventy thousand dollars.
That we appropriate, that we appropriate that at least to?
How do you design if you don't know where it's going?
That would allow us to, well, what I guess what I'm saying, Katie, is we could advance that public informational meeting much closer. We can certainly invest, do some little bit of investigation in terms of, you know, what we've already planned versus maybe some of these other alternatives, and really go out to a public informational meeting and discuss that issue, and see if there's, people would rather see us focus on, like I said, X, Y, and Z area rather than 1, 2, and 3 area.
Well, the forum, the P O C D forum last week was about transportation.
Yeah.
And there could be some data.
Walkability.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. So that design, the seventy-something thousand is going to be necessary.
Either way, we still, we have to negotiate a contract with the designer that's going to handle those comments, facilitate them, and give us some, I'll say, some, you know, engineering feedback or data that we can actually, you know, use with the DOT or, you know, the liaison engineer, really, to help facilitate all of that happening.
Mike, real quick, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Yeah.
The sidewalk itself, is this a traditional paved sidewalk?
Concrete.
Concrete sidewalk.
Concrete sidewalks, yes.
Is there any provision within this that we can at least cut and put the base down on some of these paths for future paving, and maybe get, you know, almost encourage, let's say, some of the, some of the owners, some of the property owners that, you know, are on this, are on this, this path?
Yep.
To, you know, go in and make a deal with Home Depot. You know what? We put the base down, you paid for the concrete. Can, is that something we can pull off? Because we could probably encourage some of those folks that would take advantage of that foot traffic, right? Maybe not have the funds to do the entire project, or maybe don't have, maybe have an issue where I can, I can put, I can pay to put the sidewalk in, but I can't maintain the darn thing. If I, if I pay portion of putting the sidewalk in, and the town makes sure it's clear, you know, we may be able to leverage some of these dollars out a little bit farther. It was just a quarter.
So, I don't really know how to answer it. I, I would imagine, Tom, that we could do certainly some things with the property owners in terms of investment opportunities. I, I think the state would need to see a guarantee that the, you know, they're not going to pay money towards a sidewalk, or even the preparation of a sidewalk that's not compliant with the rules. So to cut it in, I get your point, but if you had written agreements with the property owners that said, you know, we're committed to these funds, I would imagine that, you know, we, we could probably entertain that in, in the program. But, you know.
I mean, you mentioned something about realignments and things like that. You know, listen, we know from, let's say, the Big Y Shopping Center to, to, you know, to McDonald's.
Yep.
Right? There's some buildings aren't going anywhere. But we have that nice piece of, that nice stretch of land at Still River that somebody sooner or later, hopefully, is going to make a deal on. Right? We want him to put that sidewalk in, obviously.
Sure.
But if there was, you know, within the process, and maybe it's not something that is part of the grand, maybe it's just something that we, you know, get some sort of stone dust pathway there, so that there is connectivity to a fully paved sidewalk, you know, and people can still get from McDonald's up towards Starbucks, which has a nice paved sidewalk, and then it may have to go to stone dust until you hit the gas stations where you could walk all the way down to Dunkin' Donuts.
I believe you could certainly do it as non-participating, like you just said, that that's basically the term that they would use, would be non-participating. It wouldn't be part of the grant program. It could be something funded by New Milford, and then, you know.
And it doesn't have to come in this, right, it doesn't have to come in this cycle.
So.
Right? It doesn't come in this cycle. This could be something that we could do after we put in those sections of, of sidewalk in, and then work on a future plan.
Mike?
Right now, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the table for, A, for the four hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
There was no motion. No motion was made.
Is this something that we want to do piecemeal and do seventy now?
That'd be, Mike, would that be to move the process forward?
We have no obligation to fund the construction funds now. Certainly, if you wanted to talk about, I think the mayor's suggestion of, you know, where to take it, so that you, you know, have at least identified the source of funds for the future, that's fine. But in terms of appropriating the money, you know, you don't have to appropriate, other than the design funds currently, you do not have to appropriate anything more than that.
And that's seventy?
For us to move the project forward now.
How much was that, Mike? Seventy?
About seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand.
Yeah, I would suggest seventy thousand.
That's to figure out where they're going to go.
Just for the design contract. That would allow us, the mayor, to enter into a contract with the, with the consultant to get you all of these answers, basically, and get, I think, us some public informational meetings and background.
I think that would be prudent.
I do, too.
I think that would be very prudent.
Okay.
Walter?
I have a team.
Yeah, yeah.
Does there a motion on the floor?
I haven't said anything. I haven't said anything. I just wanted to see if you were in charge.
Is there a motion?
No, we haven't. We have to make one. So is that agreeable? Are you, all right. So I move to, to take the steps of state, again, state grant application nine, five, dash, two, five, six pertaining to the Route 7 pedestrian safety improvement project with matching funds of seventy thousand dollars to allow for the design contract to be implemented by the mayor and DPW.
Second.
Before you, second with the funds to be taken out of the other sign.
Is that, are we all in agreement?
Yes.
Requesting special appropriation through board finance.
It'll go to them. It's the recommendation to go to board finance.
Recommendation to take the seventy thousand dollars for the design contract from the unassigned.
Second.
Undesignated.
Undesignated.
Same thing.
Okay.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I'll bring that to the board of finance.
Okay. So item B is action on the sidewalks at Petty Bone building, the community center, whatever we call it. Eight B.
Yeah. So I don't know that there's a whole lot of action, but I think you have the application package that
Yes.
Went to the, to the state for those funds. We were awarded them. It does cover the plan that was included in the package there of, you know, the Petty Bone property. That's a grant that can only be used for construction, not design. But the design plan is, you know, at least the layout of all the sidewalk areas is substantially done. We have some details, obviously, that we, we have to get together to finalize that.
No match.
Project. But there's no match for, for the town right now. We kind of planned this project along with the, the previous project that we just discussed, in terms of the constructing sequence, would go from the Petty Bone property on Piccadistri Road first, and we would get as far out to and along Route 7 as we could with the two hundred and ten thousand that we have for construction. If any of the sidewalk along the Petty Bone front, which Route 7 was not completed with two-ten, we would further complete that with the program that you just approved, the seventy thousand for design.
And am I correct that there's a sort of, I would say a diagonal, but there's a off of Route 7 towards the Petty Bone parking lot now, some sort of a sidewalk going there? Or is it only going to be an L-shaped right angle?
There's, we have a block plan. I don't know how well you can see it right here, but it's a full-size plan at least.
Yeah, that's what I remember.
So this is Piccadistri Road, this is the same one? That's just the survey itself? Piccadistri Road?
Yep.
And Route 7. We kind of have a central corner over here, talk about the bus stop location, so we have a sidewalk going parallel with Route 7 and kind of pulling away from Route 7 because we need to kind of create a bank for slow purposes. And we would focus on this piece of sidewalk all along Piccadistri Road, as much of that sidewalk as we could get done with two-ten.
So it's going towards the diner?
Correct.
So it'd go past the diner?
No, it only goes to the corner of the diner.
So I would, if I'm walking north, I?
We'd connect to the diner with the camera.
Okay, so if I'm walking north, and I go down, I have to go to the corner to stay on the sidewalk to turn in to Piccadistri. There's no cutting across to get to the building?
Other than the bus stop?
No, I got it. It must've been, it must've been the bus stop.
No, there is one other sidewalk, I believe, you're right, connecting from that bus stop onto the property.
I didn't do it.
Excuse me. You know, I don't do it.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, there is. So this, this little section right here, we have the bus stop, and then a small piece of sidewalk that gets to the parking lot. And then you can walk to the building from there.
Thanks. So this is already signed, gentlemen? So we don't have to do this?
Things, understanding of how the two relate together, the camera that you mentioned before in the community connectivity grant.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. So shall we make that?
I don't think there's anything we need to?
We don't really need to do anything because this contract was signed in 2017 by Mayor Ronbeck on July 25th of 2017.
Correct.
So, there you go.
Okay. Next, Mike, the fifteen thousand for the repair of the boiler?
Yeah, so my proposal was, I, you know, we had authorized fifty thousand for roof repairs over there. Unfortunately, at the beginning of winter here, one of, one of the two boilers that's down in Petty Bone experienced three sections, three of the big steel sections that are, cast iron sections that are down in the boiler, had some cracks. And basically what they do is they, they basically, we call them cracks, but it expands and contracts the gaskets that are between them. It just, it's kind of like a car, be a blown head gasket. Basically, you warp your, you know, the metal rings and the gaskets don't seal real well, and it starts leaking. And fortunately, we're starting to see a lot of water leakage there. And currently, that boiler is shut down because of the amount of leakage of water going through there. So this is, you know, the request, basically, we had a quote for just over fourteen thousand dollars, although your estimate says up to fifteen, only for, backup, if you want to say, just in case it goes over a little bit. But I don't, wouldn't see it going over any more than that.
And kind of a sidebar, as we talked about in December, was we need to look at any ways we can to mitigate the, the real increase in the gas to the building. We were, I think seventeen thousand was January, I mean, it was December. January's was twenty-three thousand. So any way we can look to mitigate even this repair to help, to help.
I can tell you, it's not helping with one boiler running is, is, one, it's, there's like zero factor of safety right now. If that boiler were to go down for any reason, there's no other heat for that building currently with this boiler shut off. And, you know, the two of them together, I think to Mayor Bass's, you know, point, they help each other be more efficient.
I understand.
When they're running all the time, it's just not as efficient for them.
Mike, did we not allocate ten thousand dollars for a repair of a boiler there, not maybe six months ago, seven months ago?
I, I don't believe for this building. I think it was for the Richmond Center. I don't believe it was for this building.
Oh, I'm pretty sure it was for this building. Yeah, so now we're into twenty-five thousand.
Well, we made, we did make a repair last year, last fiscal year, on the other boiler that had a cracked section, which we did repair. But I don't believe we had a, I don't believe it was a supplemental or any kind of appropriation, Katie. I could be mistaken on that.
So here's my question. It, to repair means you're going to replace that section of the boiler?
Yes.
Okay, so there's three that are bad?
Yes.
And that's what you're going to replace? How many are bad in the other boiler?
None. Right. One was replaced last year. That's.
That must be what I'm thinking of. Okay.
Yes.
So by the fifteen thousand dollars, you're going to replace the three cracked, the potential for, there's five altogether, is that right?
Somehow, I thought it was seven in each of them.
Oh, maybe.
It could be five.
Okay, maybe.
It could be.
I guess because they're all the same age, we could probably expect that there'll be some more cracks. So I suppose it's a potential for some more.
Did you, did you, did we change the pumps there? Did we change the burner? Is that part of this at all? Because, I mean, listen, boilers run at the most efficient when they're at steady state.
That's right.
Right? It's when they go on and off, and they're not at steady state, that they lose, that they're less efficient. So something that runs all the time is going to be far more efficient than one that starts and stops. So, I mean, I could see this boiler needing work, which will save us some money. But if the, you know, if the burner is an old burner, and we are burning more fuel than we need because of the size of the jets, you know, I think it's something you really have to look at.
There, there's a recommended both temperature and pressure range for them to operate in, which we do check them every morning. Our tech goes down there and checks the pressure and the temperature that they're running at, make sure it's in the, it's in the proper operating range. If it's not, our tech ones get a call and go, you know, seek out what, whatever the problem is. You know, it's cleaning, it's the adjustment of a nozzle, whatever it is. Or if they can't diagnose it and fix it, we do call in, you know, we have mechanicals, you know, that we work with that can come in and diagnose those things as well. But, you know, they do run, I'll say optimally, we, one thing we've had problems with down there since we obtained the building, the pressure tanks, the water tanks that are pressurized that feed the boiler, there was a leak in one of those, which was causing some, you know, every time it loses water, it has to recreate the heat and the steam. And that's a loss of energy. You talk about efficiency, that's an inefficient way of it operating. We fixed that problem, two years later, crack in the one boiler, fixed that problem, you know. It was a slow leak at that point. It was, we weren't losing a real lot of water in that particular boiler. This one came about, it just, once it started, it, unfortunately, it just blew up into three sections all of a sudden when we had it. What we're seeing right now is there's a whole run of piping systems and tunnels down underneath that school. I'm sorry, I'll get to you guys' questions. There's a whole, you know, piping system that feeds all the rooms. And so we're starting to see leakage now in those areas as well. And I think next, you know, my next year's budget has at least some money programmed towards, you know, maintaining and going in and replacing any of the valves, any of the piece of piping. Although I think we're going to have to do one of those quicker than not, but, you know, I'm not asking for that.
Is it buried in concrete?
I'm sorry?
Is it buried in?
No, they're in the tunnels. But tunnels, you know, these tunnels are confined spaces, and our, our guys are not trained to go in those tunnels. We're working with another mechanical company that has some, some training for that. Yeah, could get them in the tunnel and do the inspection to see what, where the leak is, if we can even isolate it or shut it off.
Do you respect the tunnels, too?
So.
Mike, was it, did you ask the guy if this was contributed to the gas smell, or no?
We're not aware of any, I'm not aware of any gas, gas. We had, you know, one gas leak problem. It was on a weekend about, I don't know, four or five weeks ago, maybe. I think.
And that was outside of the building?
Yeah. It was the valve that feeds the building, as we understood it. But it was, I think the, the windows were open, but it was right next to the cafeteria or something, and you could certainly get the smell in the building.
Did the gentleman that's going to repair, that did the estimate, did he give you a lifespan that he thought this boiler had, you're going to have to fix it?
So these are typically thirty-year boilers. You can certainly get, you know, more life out of them than that. And they're, you know, like twenty-six years old, twenty-seven years old now. You know, these are, they're, they're good-sized boilers, no doubt, and they're expensive to replace. But, you know, I say thirty years is a typical lifespan for them, maybe thirty-five years, you know, you can get out of them. But repairs like this is not uncommon at this, you know, age span of them. You know, but the heating system that's there is set up for a school. It's not set up to operate in an office complex structure, which we've talked about through a variety of different things. But that's, you know, that's kind of a different point. This But that's, you know, that's kind of a different point at this, at this stage of the game. We really do need both boilers running to make the building both efficient and so that we have at least some level of backup, which, you know, thankfully we do right now. We have obviously the other boiler when this one went down, so, but we don't want to run that too long.
How long, how long has this boiler been down, Mike?
It's been probably at least four weeks, I'd say now.
Is that contributing to the cost that you think the surge turned to the cost?
I would imagine, I, you know, I'm not, I mean, I just heard this just the other day, I think, you know, as well, so I would imagine it did. See, I mean, one boiler running constantly is a lot less efficient than them running on and off, no doubt.
I mean, another question, Mike, I know this is not your expertise, or maybe it is, I've been in the building. And the rooms that are empty are like 80 stories. And some of the rooms that are half-empty with people, they have to open the windows because of stuff. So my question to you is, maybe you can answer or not, is that because the building isn't set up to be individually thermostat and stuff and some rooms are 80, so this can just contribute to the failure of the boiler over time?
It's, I don't believe that that's contributing to the, this particular system circulates water through a piping network that I just described throughout the building. How much comes up through the pipes into each room is controlled by an individual room thermostat. There are pressure contacts that you can put on each thermostat in there to regulate that. Right now, when the board ed vacated the building, they used that same system at other schools and they took all of, you know, those pressure controls, came with them or went with them to the other schools as backup parts or replacement parts or whatever. And, you know, so the room control system right now is, you know, we can invest money to do it, but it's, you know, as I'm understanding, it's probably between a $30,000 to $50,000, you know, investment to go in there and do something like that. The second component you can maybe do is isolate some of the building from, you know, actually getting some of the circulation. You'd want some circulation going to it because you don't really want to leave it, you know, one area totally cold, one area warm. But you might be able to isolate some of the piping system, but that's a better question for a mechanical engineer that runs that system because there's some offsetting things to do in that, that you may create other problems. You might create too much pressure in the boiler or, you know, too much temperature because it's not circulating enough water. Those things are sized for the piping system that's there. So isolating it might not be the best thing, but certainly regulating the temp, we could do. But you can only do that with the pressure regulation valve, which we don't have on the rooms right now.
Because of the age, Mike, I mean, obviously, to repair all, go into each room, we'd think better to just put more efficiency. Let's see, more appliances or individual heating components as opposed to just keep putting a Band-Aid on this old type of heating system. Because you don't have air conditioning, there's no air conditioning in there.
Just in the administration area, there is some air conditioning.
Window air, but I'm talking about efficiency area where there's vents and there's piping and stuff. There's none of that as well. Okay, thank you. Walter?
Mike, did I, did I read that correctly? $8,000 for labor?
Yes, just, just about, correct.
All right, let me ask another question. Doug, I think I missed mostly a question here. You were talking about isolation. You add on to Pettibone, probably where the Board of Education should be, that's empty right now.
Yes.
Is there a separate zoning for that where you could, no, it's all one unit, so it's got to go to the whole building?
The boilers feed the entire building. The regulation is in the thermostat valve, like it's on the wall here.
Alright.
Except that, that tells how much water is sent through the system, but without that pressure control valve-
Okay, but that pressure control valve is on the radiator itself.
It's on, it's in the room itself. It's like a thermostat that's on the wall.
Yeah, but that thermostat is talking, but that thermostat is talking to a valve to bringing in the right amount of-
So you can-
Regulates that valve on the heater, the side heater.
And the valves are still there at the heating source.
Yes.
It's the unit on the wall that's gone.
Correct. Our guys have turned them down to the ability that they can, but it's not regulated by temperature, like, you know, Doug's-
So this was a 1950s design, old-school giant loop that today is a dinosaur. I mean, there's far better ways if, when the community decides what's going to happen with this building. I'm okay with the $15,000, but I wouldn't spend any more over there. There's much cheaper, smarter ways to do it that provide air conditioning and heat in each zone, as I've spoken about, for the library and any other municipal building in town.
We're just trying to nip it along-
I agree with this.
Till we can decide, you know, what the final fix is and then we can price out-
You can't let this thing go down the tubes. If you don't spend the $15,000, this is going to turn into $15,000.
You have to, Tom.
Yeah, you have to.
You have to.
You have to have this fixed right now.
Mike, I just have a quick question. I do know about steam and boilers and things and how they work. And I want to know, is the building heat turned down every evening and every Friday night until Monday morning?
That would be a better, I will ask Dave that question. I don't, I don't know, I believe the boiler is set to, you know, back off at certain times.
Exactly.
I.e. the beginning of the business day to the end of the business day. And then it would back off on temperature at that point, yes. But I will verify that, Katie, for you and make sure that that's the case.
Because if it's turned too low, the pressure that builds up in trying to compensate back to a normal temperature from very cold, you know, that causes a lot of problems in the pipes.
And it's a big building too, so it does take a long time to go from one temp to another. It doesn't just change, you know, in four or five hours.
And there is a theory that allowing it to stay stasis at a reasonable temperature is more cost-efficient than-
Much more.
I can assure you, our guys have gone through that building and tried to adjust it to any degree that they can to keep it comfortable in there, but yet not overheat it.
Because as you point out, it was not, it was not used the way it's being used now, every day, five days a week type thing, so.
Well, you had a much greater internal load with 400 kids in the school.
All right.
What was the cost? You said that we're in December, January, or?
About 23, oh, 17 and 23 was last month.
So 23, almost $800 a day.
So I moved to authorize the use of up to $15,000 of money that was allocated for the Pettibone roof repairs to repair the boiler at Pettibone, per the quote that we all have in our packets.
Sure.
Any discussion?
Just one second. Shouldn't we say it's not to exceed?
Not an appropriation because the money's already appropriated.
Right.
Okay.
It's the money that was going to be-
Just checking.
You know, I love those words. I know, I love those words.
Not to exceed.
Any, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Okay. We have a discussion on the Lotsip grant for Still River, Elm Street, Route 202, and Pumpkin Hill. For the possible action after we discuss, Mike?
Sure, so this is, you said the Elm Street, correct?
I said Elm Street, Still River, Route 202, and Pumpkin Hill.
Oh, okay, we both wrote together, great. So Elm Street, East Street, application in 2012 and '13. And we published and finalized our transportation, downtown transportation study, which did include the survey reporter as well. One of the main projects that we heard from people public on was East Street and Elm Street intersection and a left turn lane there.
So Mike, for the audience listening, that's the light by the hospital.
That is correct. Particularly the northbound traffic at that intersection during rush hour or evening hours.
You mean if you're coming on 202 and you want to turn right?
Turn left to the hospital.
Coming on 202 and there's a car turning onto Elm Street.
Yeah.
There's no ability to bypass that traffic currently.
That's right.
Particularly if there's maybe even two or three cars. But one car not pulling into the intersection can block a substantial amount of traffic. Similar to the Youngsville, right, Bridge Street problem, kind of very similar. There's a pretty major utility pole at the front of Elm Street and East Street on the east side of the road. We studied a couple of different options. What we're recommending that we go with is a kind of a slip lane option. It would not be a full left turn ability. It's not controlled separately. But it would allow cars making left turns to pull to a center line that would allow bypass traffic or vehicular traffic to bypass them on the right-hand side and that are continuing straight on 202 without causing that traffic jam. It's kind of dicey because the further you widen that lane or make it a full lane, the more we impact the west side of the road. And the more we have to move the center line of Route 202, if you're thinking coming southbound now and coming by the hospital, you're going to kind of push the intersection further onto Elm Street and into what eventually becomes the hospital property. But that becomes kind of a tough corner going through a light. So, yeah, we think the happy mix between those is, I'm going to reference you to, I think it's 7B in your packet.
Eight, eight D as in dog, is that the one?
Yeah, but there's like 90 pages here.
It looks-
You're looking for the plan of that?
Looks something like that.
Yeah, right.
Was that an 8D?
7A.
There it is.
Can I show you? We look at 7A, this is northbound Route 202. It's the hospital over here. That shows a full left turn lane and straight through lane. What we're advocating, what we really applied for was the second option of this, which is 7B.
This one here?
Yeah.
So it's number three, number three?
What that kind of shows is not a full width, not a turn lane, but what we call a slip lane.
This is lanes, right?
Does that make sense?
You know, this came up at the POCD conversation last week and it came up a decade ago. And I know we talked about it in year 12 and '13 with Pat.
Yeah, during our transportation study as well. It was one of the highly rated, um, public designers, if you want to say. So we did apply for it under the Lotsip program. We have, need to do a little bit more design work, I think, these- They requested what, to update these? Would more engineering, get a little bit more study?
Yes, this particular program, the Lotsip program, is operational through WestPOPS, which is our regional group. What has been submitted to them is some preliminary designs for two programs. Although you have four streets listed here on your agenda, it's actually the Elm Street and East Street intersection, that is one. And that is the priority program. The second program that also is part of this discussion is actually Grove Street or Still River Drive with the intersection of Pumpkin Hill. Traffic backs up on Pumpkin Hill, trying to make the right with the completion of the Still River Roundabout. That's adjusted the traffic patterns there for those people. So both of those preliminary applications, or actually it's a preliminary solicitation, have been submitted to the COG based on information from our town engineer as well, some of the narratives that I helped us put together. The COG has come back to us because we have not secured design funds in their entirety. That is a new rule this year, apparently. Because we have not secured the design funds, what they are looking for is for us as the town to button up the projects a little bit more. And based on the workload after conversation with the mayor and Mike Zarba and some of the things you guys have, our engineers in their department are already working on. Basically, we need, let me decide about 15.
10 to 15 thousand.
About $10,000 to hire an outside consultant to button these projects up for us so that they can be resubmitted to the COG. The reason this is coming in front of you now and not something that we like to put into the budget that you're currently discussing for next fiscal year is because the COG is awarding these projects with the limited funding that they have. Once the project meets their criteria, they're funding it. So if we wait until next fiscal year, there's a significant risk that the funding will have already been spent and allocated to other communities.
We're not asking for funds right now, or?
$10,000 to help button up the programs so that I can properly submit them back to WestPOPS.
That's for both intersections?
For both, yes.
Yes.
10 to 15 for both?
Yes, and that's preliminary information. It's not the final design, but it buttons up the program for the COG to be able to give us a commitment to fund. Once we receive that commitment to fund, that is really critical, once they issue that to us, they cannot really take that back. And then at that point, we would be responsible for the final full design, but we would have time to do that for you to be able to allocate it either into the next fiscal year budget package or whatnot.
How much?
15,000.
Just about $200,000 for both would be designed. Those are the estimates.
That's the town cost?
So 15 now and then 200. Later on, but it would come, that would be for, not to exceed the estimate of, unless.
And what's the stake if we have?
So these projects, the preliminary estimates for the East Street and Elm Street were about $700,000 worth of construction. And then the Grove Street-Pumpkin Hill intersection was about $614,000.
So you're looking at about a million, Mike, you're looking at about a million five?
That the town, the state's going to give us for a couple hundred grand?
For a couple hundred thousand.
But I need to be able to finish the applications to their satisfaction.
So in this case, unlike the other one, the match is the design, only they pay for the entire construction.
And what is that, what's the chance of us doing the design and them saying, eh, we're not going to get it?
We have an excellent track record with projects that we've taken on with the Lotsip program that have been allocated through the COG. We, it's something I've talked to them about. I know Mayor Bass has spoken to them about. They are in a situation currently where they have committed to fund various projects across the entire region in different communities and the projects haven't moved. Every time they have committed to fund a Lotsip project for New Melford, we have moved on that project. We got the money secured for design, we executed the project and got it completed, most of the times under timeline. So the risk is minimal for that, Mike.
And Mike, the WestCOG is the Western Council of Governments, so it's from Sherman all the way down to Greenwich. And they've changed the parameters of these jobs now where they want you to have, you know, pretty much some, at least some initial design work. And what's happening is now we have to compete with the Grenwiches, with the Stanfords, with the Norwalks of the world and the Danberys. But this is their normal way of doing business, anyway. So for us to grab these funds, we have to do the same thing, which is do this initial kind of design work to be able to get this kind of funding.
So right now, what are we talking about? You want us to approve?
Up to $15,000.
Up $15,000.
Up to, not to exceed $15,000.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so the-
I agree with this.
The motion would be to take advantage of the Lotsip grant for Elm Street and 202. This is only, right? East Street and Elm Street? Yeah, just those two. And Grove Street and Pumpkin Hill. Those are the two intersections. I have no Grove Street on here. Well, no, because it's listed incorrectly. I'm sorry your agenda is not listed correctly. Okay, Grove Street and Pumpkin Hill, not in the amount of, not to exceed $15,000.
And the second?
Well, that's my next question. My next person's not here.
This would be a recommendation to the Board of Finance?
So the motion is to make a recommendation to the Board of Finance regarding a Lotsip grant for Still River, Elm Street, Grove Street, and Pumpkin Hill with an amount not to exceed $15,000.
They would take it out of the other side.
Second.
Third.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike, a little housekeeping. We have two drawings, Pumpkin Hill and Turn Lane, East Street and Elm Street, and they're both number three and they both stay down in the legend, 92 Lanesville Road. You might want to pick one of these before you send them out. I mean, I could see why because they're the same, but they're not the same place.
Mike, can I just sort of refresh you?
Both number three. And they both say Lanesville.
Are they going to move the telephone pole on the corner of East Street going right up Second Hill? In this whole configuration, because my map isn't clear enough, but that-
Say that one more time.
That telephone pole at the end of the street, at the end of, no, up East Street, at the end before you make the right?
Right.
That telephone pole is, you know, like right on the road. Is that part of this? Is that, is that going to move that? Because I can see this little squeeze happening where people are going to wind up in that telephone pole.
We've approached utilities about, that pole is a particularly sensitive pole. They can't really move it anywhere because they can't move it east because it's already as close to that house as it can be. I believe they have a 10-foot requirement from part of the structure there, and I think they're as close as they can be on that side. We asked them to look at moving it across- Um, we asked them to look at moving it across the intersection towards the cemetery, um, and stringing everything to that, but, um, because it's kind of a hub of, you know, wires running, running south and east and west, um, that became a little bit more complicated as well. So I think we, one of the reasons we focused on trying to move the road west rather than try to deal with moving that pole or relocating that because that's probably even more, well more expensive than what we're talking about doing right here. And I will say, we have gotten a commitment from the hospital at 202 intersection during their emergency, uh, emergency room expansion project to, uh, work with us on the right-of-way issues. And they own the property that we need on the west side of the road, so.
Thank you for the answer.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Uh, next, Gaylord and Mud Pond Road.
All right, Dan. So we're here for a referral to the Planning Commission for, uh, four property acquisitions, one for each bridge. Just to give you a little bit of background. The Gaylord Road Bridge, um, is at the western end near Churchill Road going into Sherman, near Goldrick and Martin Farms, if you're familiar. And the Mud Pond Road Bridge is the first bridge, um, as you come off of Long Mountain. Both of these were accepted into the state local bridge program, and one of the requirements of that, uh, the town is responsible for both property acquisition or construction easements, as the case may be. Both sets of property owners in this case were amenable to a waiver of compensation and appraisal, which is a description of that they would take, you know, no money from the town and they would grant us, um, the property take and construction easements in order to complete these projects. So this is one phase of what we anticipate, um, completing, you know, this year on this project.
Um, the size of the bridge at Mud Pond Road, it's like a one, one and a half lane road, a lot like Ternisky. We're not doubling this bad boy up like we-
No, this is already a, you know, twenty-foot width bridge to begin with, and that's what we're-
It's gonna maintain that.
And that it will taper back into the existing one-lane road that's, that's there.
Um, property owners, not the easement people, but the people who live there, uh, Gaylord and Mud Pond, uh, they're aware that this is going to take place?
Correct. We had a public information meeting for both of these bridges at the Gaylord's Old Firehouse, so, uh-
Okay, and also on the Gaylord Bridge, it isn't going to be changed in any?
Correct. It's generally the same footprint that's there currently. The, the McGoldricks had expressed the idea of straightening the curve, and that was not what we're proposing with this project.
Okay.
We've been able to meet with them, um, to satisfy their requests. Um, we are complete with design and complete with permitting. What we need to finalize is some of these administrative details, receive funding, and go to construction.
And for tonight, Dan, all you're asking for is to just do this as a referral?
Right. And the motion?
Yep.
Uh, move to refer the following to the Planning Commission for, uh, pursuant to Connecticut General Statute eight twenty-four. Item A, Gaylord Road Bridge, number nine oh five oh two one, replacement. Temporary and permanent property easement project on Gaylord Road Tax Map fifty-three slash twelve, fifty-three slash fourteen, and fifty-three slash ten A. And item B, Mud Pond Road Bridge, number nine five zero zero three, replacement. Temporary and permanent property easement projects on Mud Pond Road Tax Map eighty-four slash twenty-seven and eighty-four slash twenty-six.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, next, the, uh, public hearings that we had, uh, prior to the town council meeting tonight.
All right. Motion to repeal of, uh, Ordinance Chapter Two, Article Nine, Recycling Education Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to repeal Ordinance Chapter Sixteen, Article Four, Section sixteen dash forty-seven, Composition Terms.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And motion to repeal Ordinance Chapter Sixteen, Article Four, Section sixteen dash fifty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Motion to adjourn this fair.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, everyone.